Okay. Seeing none, we'll move right into the agenda then. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes from March 24th. I'd entertain a motion.
So move.
By Paula.
Second.
Seconded by Brendan. Is there any discussion on the minutes? If not, we'll do a roll call vote, please, Janet.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
As Mr. Doyle joins us. Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Ms. Hayne.
Aye.
Ms. I.
Aye.
Has Ms. Lambert joined us?
Ms. Romeo.
Aye.
Has Ms. Ray joined us?
She's going to be late. I think she's not going to get here till about 7:15 or so, so. Okay, so we have a presentation tonight. We're taking the presentation and the action on the high school renovation project budget first on the agenda this evening so that our guests can share what they need to with us and be available to answer any questions and then we'll take up the rest of the meeting on the business of the board. So Mr. Callahan, should I hand it over to you or are you going to kick it off?
Yes, thank you, Lynn. Everybody, my name is Mike Callahan. I'm the chairman of the Renovate Like New Committee. We're here tonight to provide a brief presentation regarding the scope of the project and the status. We're hoping that results in an approval from the Board of Education of the design as presented by the architect. We have with us tonight the owner's representative, Scott Pelman from Colliers, as well as Robert Roach from Friar, who are architects, and we also have representatives from Downs, our construction manager. I'm going to hand it over to those gentlemen to provide the details of the project. But just as a brief introduction, I would like to say that at this stage, on Monday night, the building committee approved the plans and specification and are recommending without reservation that the Board of Education approve them as well. We have worked diligently to develop the plans and specification. I can say that we have satisfied the educational specifications prepared by the Board of Education. The design and owner's rep and construction team have done an excellent job of making sure that we stay within the budget. The project has progressed to the point where we are now ready to meet with the state of Connecticut and ask for their final endorsement. Our expectation is we will receive approval from the state of Connecticut sometime in May and we will immediately go to bid and we're hoping to have our bids back in hand evaluated and be in a position to award contracts sometime in the middle or late July, maybe a little earlier than that. We do need one more final endorsement by the state legislature. We are, our project is on the priority list. That priority list has been prepared by the State Department of Education and will be formally, or it's very likely, highly probable that that priority list will be formally approved at the very beginning of July. So I think we're on track schedule wise. And then the last thing I'd like to say is we've had tremendous cooperation from the school administration and staff. They've done an excellent job under the circumstances of helping us with the preparing the project. If everything goes as expected, we'll be under construction at the end of July with an expected three-year construction period. So Scott or Bob, I don't know which one makes sense. Scott, if you want to just give a brief overview of the budget and then let Bob and his team do a presentation of the scope.
Sure, thank you.
And I would just, yeah, I'm sorry, Scott. I just want to make sure to say one more thing is I'm going to ask both, all the members that speak tonight of the team is to keep it short and high level. But having said that, we're also prepared to answer any questions of any of the Board of Education members. I know there's probably many of them, but we have addressed all the EdSpec requirements, but we'll keep the initial presentation broad and then allow as much time as you want in terms of questions. So Scott, I'm sorry, it's yours.
Thank you, thank you. I'd just like to ask the board members to hold their questions till the end of the presentations so that we can get through the presentations and hear everything before we start peppering them with any questions. So go right ahead, Scott.
Thank you very much and good evening, everyone. This is Scott Pelman from Colliers, your owner's project manager. So I'm going to start with the part that's not so exciting, just the budget and then turn it over to Bob so he can show you the final plans. If I can, I'd like to share my screen. So just briefly, just to let you know about the process, that every major milestone of the project is schematic design, design development, now construction documents. We've had two estimators, PACS, PACS, who was the estimator for the architect and Downs Construction, who's your construction manager. At the end of every major milestone, we did two estimates. We would put those estimates side by side in a format that Colliers controls and we would have a day to two full days going through each one of those estimates as a reconciliation, looking at unit costs, values, is the scope correct? And then we would present those budgets to the building committee. If we were not on budget, we would present options and methods and ways to get us back on budget to make sure that we were on budget when we proceeded to the next phase. Our construction budget, overall construction budget is $93.3 million. And what you see before you is the CD budget reconciliation summary that was presented and approved to the building committee. And, you know, again, keeping it high level, the one nice thing to see here is that at the bottom, after reconciliation, and again, we're never going to get both estimators to completely agree, but we want to make sure they always look at the projects differently. But we want to make sure that, you know, both are at or under budget. And in this instance, both estimators were underneath our target budget. Our blended rate, which is this last column here, we're at 98.6% or about $1.2 million under budget. This budget does include some escalations, some pricing contingencies and a construction contingency budget that's above and beyond this 93.3. So this is just the raw construction. Once we go out to bid, we're looking for our bids to come back and be below this number or write it about this number to allow us to proceed. The other document that's recently been completed is this is the Public School Construction Cost Database estimate. This has been uploaded online by Colliers. What this represents is the entire project budget. If you recall, we went back to the, to the state and Michael alluded to it that we've got a revised grant application that we've been assured will be taken up by the legislature on or before around July 1st of this year. We went back and had numbers of meetings with the state and so our approved budget is 112,329,500, which in essence is in line with the original referendum amount, just below the referendum amount that was originally passed by the community. Again, this overall budget now has all of our construction costs. It also contains then all of our soft costs, all of our fees, everything else required to do the project. This form, you know, has been downloaded again to the state website and this will be presented to the state. But again, the good news is we are on or actually below budget. We are right on our 1,112,329 budget estimate. The savings right now from being below below our target here, that 1.2 million of those extra savings, that has been at this point put below the line into the soft costs into the owner's contingency. And again, we'll adjust that when the final bidding takes place. So, you know, the bids have been fully vetted numerous occasions. We've gone through a very detailed and rigorous process. Those estimates have, as Michael had said, has been presented to the building committee. The building committee has approved the estimates. We're on budget and what we'd be looking for as part of the motion tonight is the approval of the budget to move forward to the state. So with that, is there, is there any questions?
There any questions on the budget? I don't see any, any at this point. So I guess what we'll do seems, you must have presented something very clear and concise. And we're also trusting in the building committee that they've looked this over in a lot more detail than, than any of us will. So next we'll go to, I think. Oh, okay. Friar, we're going to hear from Friar. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Lynn. I'm going to start off and then I'll kick it off to Adam. For the record, my name is Bob Roach, Vice President of Friar Architecture. We've been working on this project for some time. What Scott from Colliers just presented to you was a budget for the entire project. What we're going to present to you tonight is Phase One of a three-phase project. Phases, Phase Two will be the furnitures, fixtures and equipment. And Phase Three will be the playground for the early childhood center. And we'll be coming back to you when we're, once we move on to those designed efforts and we've gone through the same process of vetting and reconciling the budgets and making sure everything's up to speed and talking with the state. So tonight we're talking about the building and the grounds proper. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Adam from my office and he will share the screen and show you where we're at.
Good evening, everyone. Adam Palmer, I'm associate with Friar Architecture. And with that, I will jump right in to the pretty pictures. Okay, so we'll start with the site plan. And to get everyone's bearings, north is to the left on this drawing and High Street is on the bottom of the drawing. So I will zoom in and we'll start there along High Street. Again, staying with high level features here, we will be adding an additional parking lot in the western part of the site here by High Street. This parking lot will serve as faculty parking and visitor parking and will have a dedicated parent drop-off driveway for the high school. And the red arrow here pointing to the main entrance of the high school. The main entrance will remain in its current location, but we will reconfigure it to provide a more secure entry sequence into the building. With this, we will be providing new landscaping. Any existing mature trees that are not affected by the construction of the project, whether it be the building or any reconfiguration of the grounds, those mature trees will stay. Beyond that, we will be adding new trees and other vegetation, trying to keep it as low maintenance as possible so that we're not handing you a site that requires a lot of unnecessary care for ornamental or drought tolerant, drought intolerant vegetation. Highlighted in a little bit darker purple, you'll see some building additions. We are proposing one new stair tower to provide better circulation between the main level and the upper level of the high school. And then there's a single-story addition along the back of the building, which will be used for part of the early childhood program space. Moving to the left, this is the dedicated parking and parent and bus drop-off circulation for early childhood. They will have their own entrance into the building, their own parking. They'll have their own identity now. They're, they'll be taking over what is currently used for the Board of Education offices, the central office. We'll be constructing a new bus loop on this north side of the building so that the buses can queue up and not be interfering with the parents who are dropping off or picking up or the faculty who are coming to or leaving at the end of the day. Coming around to the north side or the east side of the building, there's kind of a modeled gray brown path that goes from north to south. This is a grass reinforced access road for emergency vehicles so that we have access around all sides of the building. Interspersed in that, there will be some athletic facilities for javelin and shot put. And then in the tan area will be fenced in area for the early childhood playscape. They have some of their learning spaces, a hardtop area, a greenhouse. They'll have a nice contained area on the backside of the building for all the outdoor spaces for early childhood. Moving to the south side of the site, we'll re-engineer the existing parking lots that are there to provide better subsurface conditions for new pavement. And then we'll have a dedicated bus drop-off or bus pickup lane on this south side so that at the end of the day, the high school students who are departing will be segregated from early childhood students who are on the northeast side of the building. Also on here, you'll see kind of a salmon pink color interspersed on the sidewalk and in the parking lot. These are solar carports that we're providing or solar walkways along this sidewalk here where the high school students will be getting picked up from the buses. We're using that as part of the energy features of this building. It can also be a teaching tool for the students and we're including that as an add alternate to the project so that we're making sure we accommodate all of the program spaces inside the building first. And if we are lucky enough to have a competitive bidding climate and we have enough money left in the budget, we can select this as an additional part of the project. The last new part of the parking is a new parking area on the southeast corner here. This will be dedicated for central office. They will have their own dedicated entrance. Their new spaces will be in what used to be the natatorium. We're repurposing that space, adding in a second floor inside the existing shell of the building and then using all of that space to house the central office. And then lastly, moving to the east side of the site, we will renovate the existing athletic facilities in place. No reconfiguration required. So full renovation of the track of the football field and all of the grass fields for baseball, softball, and then practice fields. You'll see a lot of fields that are layered on top of each other here. We worked with the school staff and the athletic director to make sure that the varsity facilities and any other practice facilities off-season could fit. So we're showing here how we were able to accommodate that. Now moving to the building itself. So we're, start with the lower level and we've color coded the plans. So here in the yellow-orange color is high school space and the blue is central office. So we'll start with central office first here on the main level or the lower level of the building will be their main entrance with a waiting area. And we worked with the central office staff to determine how many offices were required for each department so that we could make sure we were providing enough hardwalled offices. And on the top here, we're showing open office, there will be cubicles there, making sure we knew who needed to sit near who so that we weren't segregating one department, splitting them between the floors. The balance of this lower level will be dedicated to the high school. No real change per se to the use. The gymnasium will be renovated, will remain a gymnasium, same thing with the auxiliary gym. And then we will renovate all of the locker rooms, both for PE and for the varsity and visiting sports. Moving, most importantly, moving the women's locker room down to this level so that they have equal access to all of the athletic facilities in the building and outside the building. Right now, their locker room is on the main level, so it's not an equal accessible route for the men as it is for the women. So we're addressing that with the renovation. Moving to the main level of the building. Now we've got a third color, so again, blue is central office. I'll zoom in there quickly, we don't really need to go into too much detail for them. This will be the balance of the offices that, that aren't on the lower level of the building. Some more cubicles and a large conference room. Continuing with the high school. So the main entrance to the school is in its current location, but we have now demolished a stair that, right now you enter into a stair to get into the building. We're demolish that stair, create a secure vestibule for entering into the high school and replace that existing stair with a new stair tower. Main office for the high school will remain in its current location with some reconfiguration, all new finishes. And then the balance of high school spaces on this main level are cafeteria to the left with the kitchen and serveri, auditorium in its current location, reduced in size to accommodate the band and piano lab in their new location. Media center will be renovated in its current location. And then we have special education suite on this level. They'll be at the front of the building with easy access to the exterior. And then we'll mix in some high school education space with the echo lab trying to highlight some of the, the important educational spaces in this building that are key to the curriculum, the echo lab, a computer lab and a digital production lab, all right here, front and center in the high schools. When you come in, you're seeing activity, you're seeing the students learning and doing and exploring their curriculum right there when you walk in the building. And then we'll have a renovated nurses suite here on the main level by the elevator and then some support spaces for PE and athletics with a weight room and a wrestling room. And then lastly, for the main level in the reddish pink color is the early childhood center. So they will have their own dedicated main entrance. Come into a secure vestibule and then you'll have access into their main office space. We've located the early head start infant classrooms here by the main entrance so that the little, little ones don't have to go too far into the building to get to their classroom. They have easy access to the main office, to the nurse and to the home-based visitor playroom, which is part of the, the program and curriculum in the East EdSpec. Moving further into the ECC space, we have three gross motor skills rooms for pre-K and two for early head start. These are all congregated in the center portion of the early head start suite. That way it's equal distance for pre-K and early head start to get to these shared spaces. Some support spaces for home-based visitor and family advocate. And then moving down further in, we have all of our pre-K classrooms with their toilet facilities, special ed, instructional coaches so that there's a little bit of support space spread out amongst the entire ECC suite that you, you have access to people relative to where you are in, in the early childhood center, whether you're an early head start or pre-K. Now moving to the upper level, this plan is less colorful because this is solely dedicated to the high school. Here we made a concerted effort to reuse as many walls as possible, limiting the amount of demolition, which thus limits the amount of cost required so we could spend more money on other things, whether it be finishes or building systems. So a lot of this floor will be renovated in its current configuration. There are a lot of classrooms which are appropriately sized. So we'll remove the finishes, put in new casework, new finishes, new building systems. Most importantly, air conditioning for all spaces. That's the, one of the things that, that every school renovation asks for and we do our best to make sure we can accommodate that and we have been able to do so on this project. So core curriculum classes for the majority of this floor and then renovated science classrooms with all new finishes, all new systems and renovated art classrooms. Our classrooms are moving up to this level, all three art classrooms will be in the same vicinity of each other. That way they can share facilities, share storage and then we can use any wall space available in this area to display any of the artwork that's created in these classrooms. Then a few renderings of the main entrances showing our new windows, trying to brighten up the building a little bit. Each main entrance, whether it be early childhood, the central office or the high school will have similar pergola shade structures to, to demark the entrance, provide a little bit of shade and really just to be kind of an identifier that this is the entrance to the building. Keeping it similar among all three so that there's some unity, some uniformity around the building. And then moving lastly to the high school. As I said, we're reconfiguring this existing main entrance to make it more secure and providing this, this wood tone look on the facade. We're reskinning some of the building, trying to soften the exterior and then playing that up again with this shade structure. And then lastly, a quick rendering, just to show you how we're proposing to incorporate the solar carports into the, the site. This will provide a good amount of energy back into the building as well as providing some shade for the cars that are parking underneath these carports. That concludes my brief presentation of, of what Bob and our consultants and I have been working on for nearing three years at this point. There's a lot of detail that went into this. We can answer any questions that you may have, but I wanted to keep it as brief as possible so that we're not inundating you with too much information here.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to quite any questions. I just want to remind the board that we're not redesigning the school anything about this. This is the work of the building committee. But if you need to have clear questions, to clarify, if you have questions to clarify anything you've heard this evening, please let me know. Hi, me. You need to unmute yourself, hi me.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Given that there are no improvements, you know, regarding approvals by the state, so what would be the timeline, you know, kind of a rough? When would you start? What would go first? What would be the notice first? Or when? It's a rough timeline.
So our meeting with the state is scheduled for April 21st, so two weeks from today. At that meeting, they'll most likely give some comments. We'll bring those comments back to them, get our approval in April, early May. Construction is slated to start in July. And Downs can provide more information on the phasing. They have worked very closely with the school staff to develop a phasing plan, making sure that we have enough educational space available to the high school students while they're taking over portions of the building. First things first for them is they need to build some swing space while also building out the central office space, which then allows central office to move into their new space. Then you can renovate ECC. They've, they've put together an elaborate plan, moving all of the pieces around like a three-year-long chess match to make sure that everybody is impacted as little as possible.
Three years for completion?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, well, we have a couple of board members on the committee, so I'm sure that they've been very familiar with this and some, some of us have been following this as best we can. I can't like stop smiling and, and this is really starting to come to fruition and it's very lovely to see. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. To to the contractors and to the committee itself. So. Is there anybody from the administration or the building committee who would like to add anything? To this presentation?
Lynn, this is Mike Callahan again.
Go right ahead, Mike.
Yeah, just two things. We had provided a copy. Of the required motion for approval tonight.
Yes.
And I just want to make sure you had that number one.
Yes. Well, it's in our packet. If it's the same one that was in our board packet.
Yep. And and I did, I would like to take this opportunity just to briefly. Elaborate on the two alternates that are included. As presented by Colliers tonight. We believe we have a project that when the bids ultimately come in will be below budget. And we'll be able to move forward with the essential elements of the program. If we're fortunate enough to be have lower bids. We have two alternatives that we are considering. Adam had mentioned the. The photovoltaic solar panels on the carports. That would be alternate number one. We have also designed and that's fully designed and will be bid out. We will know what the prices are for that. And then the second alternate is artificial turf. For the main fields. So I just want to make it very clear. To anybody from the public and to the board members. Those are two elements that we definitely want to include. But will only be included if there's enough money. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then the second item. Adam had mentioned that the entire building will be air conditioned. We have taken. A number of measures to improve the overall energy efficiency of the building. But I want to caution the Board of Education. That it's likely, given the fact that these are all new HVAC systems. That the operating costs will increase above what they are today. We don't know how much, but as we go forward and start building the building and refine. The energy model, we might have some idea of what those additional costs would be. So I want, I just want to. Put the Board of Ed on notice that with a contemporary building. You get larger use. And hopefully. In your planning, you'll increase energy budgets to accommodate that. Now the solar system is potentially could save $70,000 worth of operating cost. So that's an item that I personally think. We should work hard to include and hopefully we can afford that. And then the 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 last item. This is going to be a much more sophisticated building. And in order to maintain it. And keep it operational, the maintenance costs will also very likely be higher than what they currently are. And I will work with you as the building is being built out. To help the Board of Ed and the school facilities understand what. What what I mean by that. You you might have to hire different HVAC technicians to service the system. You may want to have service contracts. So a new building not only comes with an initial cost, but comes with an operating cost. So I just want to make sure that that's clear going forward. And to the extent that we have. Information that we feel is reasonably accurate, we will share that with you. So we're hoping we've answered your questions and that you would be in a position. To approve the plans tonight. That will allow us to move forward.
Thank you for the full disclosure. And I just open it up one more time for any questions before we move on to the motion. That's in our board packet.
Hey, this is Ilda.
Go ahead.
I don't have a question, but I apologize for being late. And good evening, everyone. I just want to say like you, Lynn, I am so excited that this is finally. Coming to fruition. I'm so excited for our students, our staff and our community. Wyndham is going to be on the map, back on on the top of the map. Thank you.
Thank you, Ilda. Any other questions, comments before we go to the motion? Okay, I would entertain a motion and the motion, the wording of the motion is in our packet. So whoever makes the motion should be ready to read it if they wouldn't mind.
If I may.
I see you chomping at the bit. You certainly deserve to make this motion.
I'm very excited and very honored to be able to make this motion. It's been a lot of work to get us here. I didn't speak earlier, but. A lot of people have put in a lot of work and spent a lot of time in a lot of meetings, both with the committee, the town, the state, the board, Dr. Youngberg and her staff. So I'm very honored to be able to make this motion and I'm reading it directly from the packet that we received. The Wyndham Board of Education certifies that the Wyndham High School ECC BOE final plans. And project manuals add as prepared for bidding and dated 3/29/2021. And the professional cost estimate completed in accordance with level three of ASTM International Standard E1557. Standard classification of building elements and related site work. Uniform at two for this project dated 3/29/2021 have been reviewed and approved for this project on April 7th, 2021. I'm getting good at reading these too.
Yes, motion has been made. Who would like to second it?
Second.
Second by Brendan. Okay, any discussion?
Congratulations. Thank you, Tracy.
And Mary was also on the committee.
There's a few members on here now. Rich Schwartz on here, myself, Mary. I've been seeing a few people come and go during this meeting and it's a lot of work from all of us. I've been doing this since 2012, but a lot of people put a lot of work in this.
Okay, any further comments? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote, please, Janet.
Dr. Kevon Owen.
Aye.
Well, I guess I.
Dr. Galucci?
Aye.
Dr. Gomez?
Aye.
Ms. Haney?
She's not muted yet.
Aye.
Ms. I.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill?
Aye.
Ms. Ray?
Aye, definitely.
Thank you.
Wow, motion passes. I think we should take a moment to clap or. Do whatever dance we want to do. Congratulations to the team. That got us this far and I know we have a long way to go, but thank you for your. Your stewardship and 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 Mike, I want to say. To do the kind of work that you've done to lead the group. Through all this is is extraordinary and it's a volunteer thing. It's a labor of love and we. We can't thank you enough for what you've done so far for this.
Well, you're welcome.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody on on the team that joined us for this and. We understand completely if you get off now. And I don't think you want to stick around for the rest of our board meeting, but you're welcome to. If not, have a good evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Wow, they left one by one. You're welcome, Pam.
Yeah, Pam, this is very exciting. You and your team are going to have a lot on your hands with all this. Transition. It'll be worth it. So next item is the superintendent's reports and hopefully as time goes on, we can have shorter and shorter COVID reports.
Point well taken. Let me share my screen. Okay. You're all used to the format. I'll just go quickly. The one thing I want the board to know is that we are in the planning stages of. A partnership with Hartford Healthcare, trying to get our 16 through 18 year olds vaccinated. Obviously, if their parents give us permission to do so, that's a family decision, but we, you know, are. Definitely seeing the data that suggests that getting vaccinated. Does indeed decrease the likelihood of getting the virus, being hospitalized or worse. So. If they ask us, we're going to tell them that yes, it's a good idea, but it's obviously a family decision. The goal right now, we're still in the planning stages, but it looks like the clinic will happen probably the week of April 26th. The governor has set up the week of April 19th as the start date for all of the alliance districts to have these student based clinics. So we'll have a plan. We we just pushed out a survey tonight. To find out how many of our 16 to 18 year old students would be interested in getting the vaccine. And I I'm trying to push to also see if we can connect. Any eligible family members connected to those students. So while you're taking your kid to get vaccinated and you also need a vaccine. Perhaps you can do it in, you know, one stop shopping, so to speak. So I'll I'll keep the board updated on this, but it is exciting. Especially to be partnering with Hartford Healthcare again because they did an amazing job with our educators. Just a really efficient operation and everybody felt good about it. So we're hoping the same thing is true for the student on the student side. This is the usual chart that I put up. You can see on the left hand side is where we were two weeks ago. These are the top 10 cases per 100,000 in the state of Connecticut. Again, I want to say Wyndham is not in the top 10 once again, which I'm really happy about. In fact, we're.
We're not seeing anything.
Dr. Youngberg. You're not seeing anything? All right, hang on one second. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just. I'm glad you did because that's not the way it was supposed to be. Screen two. Can you see it now? Yes. All right, good. I don't know what happened there, but I'm glad we fixed it. So again, on the left hand side is where we were two weeks ago. For the top 10 per 100,000 and then the right hand side is this week. You'll notice that Wyndham's case rate is 20.8 cases per 100,000. We are 110th. Out of 169, so so happy not to be anywhere near the top. You will notice though that between the two charts. There have been more cases in the state of Connecticut. You can tell that the highest case rate was 40.6 two weeks ago and now we're up to 85 in one of the towns. So and you'll see the 30s on the left hand side and the 50s and 60s on the right hand side. So there has been an increase in cases. We are not seeing, it's it's totally manageable in Wyndham. Case rate has gone up, but we're not seeing too many in our schools. So we'll talk a little bit about that. But again, Wyndham is not near the top. Here is the an example of what we've been seeing for cases since the last time we spoke. Very few positive cases coming into to the school district. What is happening though, as a result of bringing more students back in person. Is because we have to follow the six foot social distancing when it comes to the contact tracing. If we do get that one positive case, if there's less than six feet social distancing in a classroom, the entire classroom goes home. Right? So that is still raising our our numbers of quarantine. As you can see in the next chart here, we do have one full classroom currently quarantined at Barrows right now. But these are the numbers on the screen are the number of staff members. Oops, this should be a six. I just. Don't know why I sometimes don't notice these until I start to present them to you. And then I notice. Okay, so we have six staff members in quarantine or isolation and a total of 42 students. And that's wrong also. I am just striking out everywhere. I'm going to reverse these and send you the corrected version, but obviously it's 42 students. And not staff members. These are in the wrong columns. I do apologize for that. So 42 students are currently in quarantine or isolation. With one of those entire being a classroom at Barrows and six staff members. We did receive one new submission on our COVID compliance on March 30th. So we are up to 22 submissions since we opened this up in February. We have addressed the mask compliance issue that was reported and will continue to do so to make sure that everyone continues to be following along. With what's supposed to be happening. This is just the same calendar you've seen for multiple. For multiple Board of Ed updates so far, just letting you know that we are about to move into our spring vacation week. We then have two additional asynchronous Wednesdays and then the start of May, we are going to be eliminating. The asynchronous Wednesdays, not only because I think it's a really good idea to get our students back to school five days a week. And get them back into a normal school, school week routine. It's also the start of our testing season. In grades three to eight, so we really need to have the kids in front of us to get through that testing. We did put in two early dismissal days to try to continue to give some teachers back a little bit of additional time to make the transition. And then we will be doing four full weeks in a row without asynchronous Wednesdays. And then it's the end of the school year. So we really are coming down the home stretch here. I just want to remind everyone, this is right off the CDC's website. The district is following the CDC travel advisory. Whatever the CDC is saying should happen, should be happening with travel is what Wyndham Public Schools is saying should be happening in terms of travel. That's both domestic and international travel. We are continually sending the message to families that we need them to do their best to follow this guidance. If we're, you know, going to try to reduce the number of positive cases in our schools. And keep our classrooms open in person. This is something that's difficult to monitor, but we're asking people to please, please, please. Do their best to follow the safety guidelines that the CDC has set out. We have, we are, we will obviously follow up on any credible information we find about. Folks traveling and strongly recommend that they follow the quarantine guidelines. That the CDC has put out and there are some changes to the quarantine guidelines if you've been fully vaccinated. So we know that we have a fair number of our own staff members. Who have been fully vaccinated and we're hoping soon to have a fair number of community members 16 and older also vaccinated. But I do want to just remind everyone that the travel advisory from the CDC is what we are following. Any questions on COVID? How's that for fast?
Anything? I don't see any. Go ahead. Dr. Youngberg, you're still on then, I guess.
Okay, so then the the next piece on the agenda is the lottery update. Mr. Weathers, you want to give a brief update on the lottery?
Yes, the update is it happened.
That's right.
The the update happened. Acceptance letters have been sent out to all. The recipients. People on wait lists have been notified in our current deadline for both the Companeros and the Barrows Lottery. Is April 28th. And that's the deadline to submit and return all the information and then. That that's currently where we are.
Thank you, sir. All right, then the next my report is the first reading of policy number 3281.2. On school fundraisers and I don't know, it was in your packet. I don't know if any of the board members have any questions or. Clarifying information you need. I know it's only the first reading, so we have time, but if there's anything that's. Burning, you'd like us to try to address, we will definitely do that.
Mark?
Thank you, Lynn. I'm not sure if I missed it or if I didn't see it, but I don't, I don't recall seeing a specific mention about. Where these accounts should be placed. I know we have to have permission to start these go funding accounts, but. Are they going to be under school principal control checking account in a. At the high school, they have their own bank, but. I'm concerned about having multiple checking accounts out there and. If Mary Jones goes missing, then we can't get the signature for the account. So where are the bank accounts going to be held?
Great question. I'm deferring to Rita.
I think it does mention something about the accounts being automatically deposited. At the direction of.
Where?
We could add into the Board of Ed. District account because I don't believe it should be. Put into the student activity funds. Because it's easier to monitor if we do it into one of the Board of Ed funds that we monitor in the finance office. So if we want to add that, I did notice that, Mark, but I I wanted to keep it generic because of. I wanted to. Keep it at the discretion of the finance office.
So do you want us to add language and then bring it back to the board for? A check back?
I think so.
I would prefer to see something very specific as to where the money is being held. I know I I mentioned this before, I ran the situation. I know, I mentioned this before, I ran into a situation with the middle school where the middle school PTO maintained an outside checking account. Then the organization went dormant for a year, and then two years later, there's still money in the account, but the president was long gone and they had a problem accessing the account. So I'm just concerned that we maintain school control access over the accounts.
Okay, I, it's great feedback.
This, this has been brought up before. This is not like a new issue, and I think we need to be clear about that, so.
And it just reminded me that we can make, we can alter the language and bring it back for the second reading.
I just want to remind everybody that my, I am not a signatory on any of the accounts yet. I'm still trying to get that resolved.
Working on it.
Yes. But we can add that language, Mark.
I have to say that in, I know in the past, and I'm sure it's still in the present practice, that the PTOs technically are not affiliated with the school. That's what I was told when I was the PTO president. We were an outside agency working for fundraising for the school, so we had to have our own checking accounts. Whether it lays dormant or not, it's, it, we have our own checking account. That has nothing to do with the school. Now, anything else that they do at the school, for the school, like as far as, you know, basketball or booster club or anything like that, they have their own accounts. So we will make that clear when we revise that policy.
Well, will you look into that and give us a clear explanation on what can and cannot happen? Please, thank you.
Will absolutely do that. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Youngberg?
Well, I have a question on the policy, and I don't know if it's Ilga or Rita or Dr. Youngberg, but there are a lot of organizations that get donations from local businesses. You know, there's the Lock-in for Literacy, there's the Booster Club. I'm not just saying PTOs and stuff like that. There's, if, say I was the PTO chair, my child graduated, I was the PTO chair at the middle school and handed it off to somebody else. But say I was and my child graduated. Now, there are no current parents on that checking account. The funds were donated to the middle school or to Sweeney, where I was also the chair, but they were donated there. If there's no continuity, then that's a waste of those funds. So I understand that PTO is a separate entity. I'm on Project Grad, stuff like that, but the funds were donated to help the students. If the funds are just sitting there kind of in limbo, that's a concern for me. And I think it was mentioned in an audit at some point. Like a town audit, not the financial audit we had separately, but I think it was mentioned there as well, but I think it's been mentioned in town audits as well.
It was. When I was on the Board of Finance, it was mentioned that it was problematic that we had all these different accounts.
Right.
We'll look into it. Thank you for bringing that up.
People may want that independence or whatever, but from a, from a, from a checks and balances accounting point of view, it's not a good thing.
Can I say something about that? So we are, we are, we are audited on all the accounts that have the FEIN number of the Board of Ed. We are not audited on PTO accounts that are separate. So the accounts that we do have, like you said, at the high school has the most accounts. There are some that are, have not been used in years and need to be, they're consolidated. So if that's what you're talking about, you know, we can do that if we can get a handle on all of the accounts and have a signatory person at the Board of Ed. So I, I think, you know, we could do that.
Thank you. That would be a good goal. I know you're working on it. Anything else? Okay. Committee reports. Mark? Finance and audit is on first.
I came in late, so I'm sorry if I missed this. Did we put approval of budget transfers as a action item? Do I have an old agenda?
I know. I have.
On my agenda.
Okay, you have an old agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Any case, so we met yesterday with the primary purpose of approving budget transfers, which will be on tonight's agenda for, for approval. And I'm sure Rita will share her screen at the appropriate time. So we're going to review those. Again, it's a primarily a shift into, some things are to account and some things are to account for COVID savings here and expenses there. So we'll see those when we do them. We also looked at the initial computer or IT upgrades and where that initial money was being targeted using some of the grant money and then some of the, I don't want to say extra, but some of the non-expended money from this year to increase our infrastructure. And so we reviewed those, you know, went over a detailed report about $2 million worth of upgrades to our systems. That he, this is the details that we talked, the details that we needed filled in from last month's report. And finally, Superintendent gave us a quick rundown, still of the SO2 and the American Rescue Plan. We haven't finalized those plans pending final determination from both groups as to how the money's being spent. But they are certainly, we are certainly making plans on how to effectively spend those millions of dollars so we get the most bang for our buck. And that's pretty much the report.
Any questions for Mark? Seems pretty straightforward. Thank you very much. School planning and design, Tracy.
Yep, hour-long, very intense meeting. I think I was hyped up on too much coffee or something. We talked about the school ventilation systems. They're going pretty well. There are a few, you know, blips here and there, but for the most part, they're finishing up heating season and they're, you know, are always a few blips with that when you deal with old equipment. That's what happens. Then we moved on to the solar proposals that we had in the works when Dr. Youngberg took over. North Wyndham School is going to be worked on first and Barrows second. We have a site visit scheduled to North Wyndham School, and then we'll have paperwork to submit to the Board of Ed probably late April. We also have the board attorney, a board attorney, looking that over to make sure that we're getting the best deal that we can. The next thing we talked about was Wyndham Center well water. We're dealing with someone from Aqua Compliance named Steve, because there's a sulfuric odor in the water in Wyndham Center. And we're putting out an RFP to mediate the smell. There is no particulate evident in the samples, but there is a strong scent of sulfur in the water, and it's making it yucky to drink. It's not something people want to drink. So that, you know, we tried mediating it with water fountains and filters on there, but the smell is still persisting. So we're going out on an RFP to see if we can get the smell mediated by an outside company. The pipe repair at the Wyndham Center School backed up from the restrooms. That was a fun time, by the sounds of it, for everybody. And they were unable to snake them, so they replaced them. And they also did some additional replacements to stop a bigger problem from showing up a little bit down the line. It was about $29,000 in repairs and replacements was handled on an emergency basis. That's why it didn't come before the board, because we needed to get our students back into school. So, and we should be okay with that funding coming out of school funds. And the other thing was a sidewalk needed replacement due to that construction out to the portables, I believe. It's something that had been on, you know, the back burner for a while, but while everything was torn up, it was just take that little piece of sidewalk out and finish the project. So that was a good thing. We talked about things that are on the the capital improvement plan, possibly going to the town. Dr. Youngberg, Dawn Tamacas and myself are going to meet and have a, a brief conversation about where we should move things around and what bigger priorities are. Some things have been on the capital improvement plan that have been approved for years. Costs have escalated, especially now with construction costs going up since the pandemic hit, and other things need to be brought to the forefront. So we're going to have a conversation about that. And of course, we'll bring it to you before any final decisions are made. Mary, Dr. Galucci voiced concerns about waters to the portables. And we discussed how portables had not factored in, like had been phased out in the facilities master plan that we're currently ending now. Friar Architecture is taking a look at our facilities master plan. So before we go and do too much with portables, that was another discussion that would have to be had between my committee and Ms. Haney's committee. Looking at the future of those, there's a need for them and there's a use for them. But other concerns such as the longevity of them, they were built to be temporaries, and the security of them in case of an issue has been discussed in the past.
So she turned over. Okay, is there any questions?
Well, wait, one more thing. Talked about the roof replacement at North Wyndham and the underground security, I mean, the underground oil tanks and the building committees for those, ed specs were approved, and they're sent out and the architectural work is beginning. And we will be able to get air conditioning at the middle school for the summer program without a generator. Hopefully, it will give us a little bit more heating and cooling costs for the summer, but SO funds should cover that, because this is to help catch some of our students up. That's it for now, I think.
Thank you, Tracy. I don't know how you keep track of all that stuff.
Lots of notes. And Tracy and Dawn are fabulous at keeping me on track too. So I, I work with a good group.
That's great. Are there any questions for Tracy? Okay, thanks. Policy committee. Ilga?
Hello again. Thanks for that thorough report, Tracy. It's always, it's always nice listening to you catch us up on all the improvements and/or improvements that need to be made. Our one improvement, well, we met last month finally, and we discussed moving forwards, forward with our outdated policies that were, that were brought out from the audit. So we are meeting on a different day this month, on a Tuesday, the 20th, with our attorney to guide us in which policies need to be first, second, and so forth. And other than that, we have other policies that we, we are still working on that are not ready to be brought to you. And we will double-check some of the wording for 3281. And that is about it.
Any questions? Thank you. I'm excited that you're working on those, updating those personnel policies. Thank you. The executive committee met earlier this evening, and there are just a couple of things we want to share with the board. A lot of the board members were on the, at the meeting, but we are moving forward with Dr. Youngberg's review. And I'll be reaching out to the board to, to schedule a meeting in mid-May where we can hear from Dr. Youngberg on her self-assessment based on the tool that we've been working on. So we're doing a little work between now and then to make sure all that gets together. Then the board will meet separately. And we will have done our own work on the, the evaluation of Dr. Youngberg. And then after we meet separately, we will schedule a meeting with Dr. Youngberg and, and complete the evaluation process and goal setting for the, for the next year. And out of all that process, we will produce a public-facing document that can be shared with folks. We, our goal is to get this all done by early June sometime and tie up the contact contract with Dr. Youngberg and, and all that sort of stuff. We did have quite a good conversation about once we get through this process, moving forward into next year, having a plan with Dr. Youngberg to check in periodically throughout the year on progress being made on the goals and, and, and provide feedback. And we did talk about instituting a feedback loop with teachers, other staff, administrators, as well as parents and, and members of the community. So we'll be working to try to put that into place and maybe start that process next fall. So that, you know, we're sort of doing all these pieces throughout the year and, and having sort of a continuous feedback loop rather than just waiting until the end of each year to talk about all this stuff. So board members should stay tuned so that we can find some dates for these meetings that will work. And Mary Galucci is going to be refining all the tools that we're going to be using based on our discussion. And if anybody has any questions about any of that, happy to talk about that. The other thing that we talked about was possibly codifying the evaluation process moving forward so that it's really clear what should happen each year. And we have the tool in place that would need to be updated. So that was brought up by Katina, and people thought that was a good idea. So we'll possibly be working on that. And then the other part of the discussion was around how to get the word out about the school budget that we've proposed to the Board of Ed, I mean, the Board of Finance. How to get it out to the community, especially during this time of COVID and not being sure about how a referendum is going to work this year and issues related to that. So we decided that we should start getting talking points, a simple fact sheet, some graphics for use on social media, two parent PTOs, SGCs. And, and there were some great ideas that were thrown out about having a school-by-school online budget explainer session where, you know, parents whose kids go to a certain school could just hear about that school and the budget. We also talked about doing something, you know, trying to get on some radio shows, dealing with the local media outlets. And then we started to wade in the, the idea of get out the vote in time of COVID and the fact that if our referendum is after May 20th, when the governor's emergency orders expire, unless they're extended, the idea for the kind of voting we had last fall won't be possible. So there won't be no excuse absentee ballots. So we were a little concerned about that. I just want to flag that for the rest of the board. We may have to do some really extra work this year in a referendum to make sure the people get a chance to vote. And then the last thing I want to mention is that next, next Wednesday, April 14th, we will be presenting. We were going, being, going back to the Board of Finance, and they will be asking more questions about our budget. And the tentative date for the hearing on the Board of Ed budget is Wednesday, April 28th, which would be a regular meeting date for this board. So I'd like to propose, after discussing it at the executive committee, that we have our special meeting on Wednesday, the 21st of April. So we can deal with any board business we need to deal with and accommodate the Board of Finance public hearing process, because we certainly don't want to take any energy away from presenting our case and having the community and teachers and other folks present the case at the hearing if it's on the 28th. So would the 21st work for folks? Give me a thumbs up if that would work for you. Okay, so I think.
Lynn, what time are we thinking of in the evening? Lynn, what time are we thinking of? In the evening at like seven?
Yeah, the usual time.
All right. We have that state meeting most of the day that day, but we should be home by then.
Yeah, hopefully you'll be home by then. Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Tracy. Exhausted. We'll have to give you extra coffee. Shots of coffee. So that's the report. Any questions? It was a really good meeting. Thanks. Thanks to everybody. Okay, Anhok Elementary School Consolidation Committee, is there anything to report, Paula?
I'm, I'm going to give a very quick report. And I may have to leave the downside of having an old house with a lot of fireplaces. Or you get rogue bats that enter the house. And you may have heard noise in the background. That's my husband trying to catch it. So if you see me duck or leave, that's why. We did meet last week. And we welcomed some new members of the committee. We're encouraging staff and some parents to join our committee. We welcome Nicole Bay, Nicole Jones, and Susan Collins to our committee, as well as our board members, of course. We had a wonderful presentation by Bob Roach from Friar, talking, giving us some historic information about the master plan that was done and how we're going to be moving forward. Our plan is to meet monthly. So that we are really going to work on this project and hopefully have a conclusion by November. Obviously, our goals are for student equity, fiscal responsibility. I know Mary had mentioned, let's keep an eye on keeping our schools environmentally clean and green. And Mr. Weathers gave us an exercise in identifying ways for the district to move from four to three. Good math. And we'll see how that looked very doable. And Dr. Youngberg is going to investigate because there was a question about class size. So we're going to talk about the contractual or policy requirements about class size as we go forward. And our next meeting is on April 27th at six o'clock. I'll try not to move around too much.
A lot going on. I can tell you bad stories, but we're not going to digress here. Is there any, are there any questions for Paula?
No, but you cannot make these up of the bats. I just wanted to laugh.
Meeting on the 27th?
Yes.
Yeah, 27th, she said.
What time is that?
That's six.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Paula. And if you go running out of the room, we'll understand why. So the next item on the agenda is discussion items. Consideration of setting the interest rate for the pension fund, which there is some information in our packet about that. And we talked about it at a previous finance and audit committee meeting. Is there anybody who would like to talk, sort of pitch this to us, what, what we're, what we're considering here? Mark?
Yeah, sure. This, Lynn, this is a recommendation primarily from, as you can see from the memo from Rita via the auditors, I guess it's just to keep our accounts more in line with reality of of the interest rates that are, that are running here. I think it's just to help maintain the balance within the budget. It's administrative detail, nothing to affect our operational expenses.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
Can I add something?
Yes, go right ahead, Rita.
So it does change the contribution amount. If you look at the bottom of the, the paper that was prepared by Millamum. So I just wanted to point that out, that it does change the contribution amount that we put into the fund for next year. But we do have to stay up with the market rate or state, actually, the market rates are going down. So we have to adjust the rate to for reality, to be honest. So that's, that's what that is. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me, but I don't know.
If anybody has any questions.
Might have any questions. People feel free to ask questions about that. It's, it's being good stewards of the pension fund too. I mean, that's, you know, the other, that's part of our responsibility. Okay. No, no, no discussion needed then. Very satisfied board, I guess, these days. If people are feeling they don't have to ask a lot of questions about what's in their packets, so. Clarity, right? So now we're on to action items and the first one is according to my agenda, and I may have printed out the wrong one. Is possible action to set a 6.25% interest rate for the pension fund? Is that what's on your agendas too? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Tracy. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote, please, Janet.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Ms. I.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Thank you.
You sound like you're talking to us from on high. He's very powerful sounding.
He's amazing.
Ignore the man behind the curtain.
So the next item I have on the agenda is possible action to approach the town to ask to work with them on a, on a study, on taking a look at alternatives to the self-insurance, health and health insurance plan design that we're in right now. So I'd entertain a motion on this and then we could have a discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mark, seconded by Jaime. So the background on this is we've been thinking and talking about this on and off for the past couple of years. And there was some discussion at a recent meeting where we said, you know, we could take action and just go to the town officially and say, we'd like to take a, take a longer look at this and weigh the details and, and the numbers. And it's a, it's a process. So just by passing this motion, we're not saying that we would do this necessarily, move out of the self-insured plan. But we could explore the state plan and, and other options. The goal being to have more budgetary dependability and, and also to potentially be offering a higher quality health plan to our employees with less of a high deductible feature to it and everything of that sort. So, but that's something that would be needed to be approved by the, by the unions through their contracts and things of that sort. So I don't want people to get antsy that we're going to be making some fast decisions here. But we need to start exploring it if we want to. Is there anybody who'd like to say anything about it? Or ask any questions? Okay, I guess we'll take a roll call vote then, please, Janet.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
She said aye. She's not, you can see her mouth moving.
Because I ain't that bad.
Ms. I.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. The next item is approval of acceptance of donation of supplies from Ocean State Job Lot.
Don't move. With a thank you very much.
Yeah.
Second, Tracy.
Seconded by Tracy. I mean, it's pretty amazing. When I was reading this in the packet, they've given us the estimated value of their donations is $24,000 worth of hand sanitizer, disinfecting wipes, face shields, things. And that's a lot. That's a nice hefty donation.
It was, yeah, two pickup trucks full of boxes. It was pretty incredible.
So have we thanked them?
I believe we've sent out some.
Normally, okay.
I mean, we went there and said, thank you. We took pictures with them and all that, but I believe we've sent them something.
Okay, thank you. So entertain a motion on approval of accepting these donations.
Motion's on the floor. Second by Ms. Lambert.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Okay. Any further discussion?
I just think that before the pandemic, it probably would have been like two tractor trailers trucks worth for $24,000. Now it's two pickup trucks worth for $24,000.
True.
True. But it's money we didn't have to spend and sit more safety for our schools.
No, I'm very grateful. It's just ironic, that's all.
Very ironic.
So we'll take a roll call vote, please, Janet.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye, me.
Ms. I.
Our bats have been found, sorry.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is approval of a new mathematics curriculum. And there was an explanation in our packet that the board approved the use of Ready Math and Eureka Math programs. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Paula? Seconded by Jaime. Okay.
Katina's been trying.
So there's an explanation that was in our packets. I don't know whether anybody wants to.
I have a question.
Yeah, go right ahead, Jaime.
The last, the last sentence, you know, talks about PD, but it needs some punctuation there. So he says, or he reads, PD costs not included numbers above will be funded through Alliance Grant. Okay, you know, is this PD, will this PD be kind of a regular PD that the district has for teachers or some extra PD or special PD? Will it be funded through the operation budget?
It would be professional development and how to utilize the, the new resources.
Yeah, I understand that. But will it, will it be covered? Alliance is not covered, right?
Oh, the Alliance Grant will cover these costs. That's why it will, it will also fund the PD and the materials. Actually, none of the, the, I was just giving the, why I said PD costs were not included in the actual amounts of the items. But the PD costs and the, the materials will all be covered grant funded. There'll be no general board.
Okay, so the PDs, you should correct that one. It's not reflected. He said that is not covered, but it is. That was my question.
Okay. Sorry, it was confusing. He was trying to say that the amount he gave to you was for the resources only. It didn't include the professional development costs.
That's what he says. So my question is,
Sorry to confuse you.
PD included in the regular operation.
It's not included in the amount listed in there. That's just for.
It's not included in the 340,000.
Correct.
That's what he says. Where is it included? Where do you get your PD, your regular?
So so the reason I didn't include amount yet, because one thing, just because I know it says math curriculum. It's actually math curriculum resources. I'm not looking to upend and revise the entire math curriculum. Actually, I see Amy Majak and Kami Nonle Poirier who are on the math committee, so, so they can keep me honest. But basically, the, the intention for the two resources, by the way, is to upgrade our math curriculum with more modern resources. One of them has actually more aligned to the Spanish authentic materials we'd like to see, as some of our staff members have said. So actually have math materials in both English and Spanish, right? Not perfect from what I'm hearing from our staff, but much closer than say some of our current math materials. And then the other resource actually is the same, is our iReady benchmarks. So there's some familiarity, ease of use, and some digital products that the staff liked. So the reason I didn't give PD costs, I'm going to wait to see when I work with this math committee and we work together to come up with some solutions, how we would have the vendors give us PD. So that's why I can't give them yet, but I could tell you that we have enough in this year and next year's Alliance Grants to cover them safely. I'm very confident.
Okay, that was my question. Yes, yes. We have it covered.
Thank you. And, and Neil, I just want to clarify that the motion was the motion in the recommendations, not the motion that's on the agenda here, which is that the board approve the use of Ready Math and Eureka Math programs. Because you had said.
We're going to use the programs. What we're going to do is our, our district's going to work to supplement them, to use them that work best for us.
No, we understand that, but you may, I thought you were concerned about the wording, so.
I, yeah, it's, it's not a big deal. I guess it's a nitpicky math thing. Sorry, I'll be quiet.
Tracy, you had a question?
I, I've done this before in different curriculums, and I know part of this is digital. Can you tell me what, are we getting textbooks? Are we getting workbooks? Are we getting CDs? Are we getting online for this $340,000, please?
So we are getting yes to everything but CDs. We are getting digital components and hard copies of the, the programs. And we're getting certain digital practice components. Actually, some of the Ready Class is already being used through the iReady diagnostic. Some of the learning paths and some of those features our staff is already familiar with. That's one of the reasons we decided to include that. And then, but yes, it will include both digital and hard copy materials. I see Mark.
Mark, and then Brendan.
Yeah, Neil, my question is timeline. I, I know many times in the past, we've unveiled new programs or upgrade different textbooks. And then we bring them out in June and July, and then we expect the teachers to be up and running within September. So what's the timeline in order to make sure the staff is up to speed with these new programs? You know, before the, before the school year starts, I want to see everything show up in July and then we expect it to be fully functional in September.
Well, well, one, it will have to arrive before June 30th, or we will violate the Alliance Grant. So I could promise you that they'll be here before July. But my next plan with the committee is to talk next steps. Again, how we would supplement and, and make recommendations of how to use the, the, the materials within our current curriculum scope and sequence in a way that's user friendly to the staff and getting their feedback. So just so everybody knows, like, I know I'm just talking jargonous. I've done this a couple of times in Meriden. I, I told the committee, this is of, of the many obstacles and challenges we have going on the next few months. This is the, the bottom of mine. We're going to be fine with this. Because this is what I'm, I used to be the supervisor of math in Meriden, so I'm used to writing curriculum and revising curriculum. So I feel very comfortable with the, the group that's in that committee. We'll be able to give PD and communicate to the staff what they need so that we can give them something before the end of the school year to look at, not the whole year. And then phase it out over the course of next year, so they have enough to go by to teach comfortably and feel as minimal stress as you can when you're implementing new materials.
And, and Mr. Weathers and I have shared philosophy about teaching and learning in general and adult learning. And we're not going to expect the teachers to understand how to utilize all the new resources to start of the school year. But we are going to get them off to a good start in implementing the first unit and how we can. the first unit and how we can make it work for kids. So we're on the same page there. The less stress we can have in our classrooms, the better everyone is. So that's, that's our goal.
Correct.
Neil, how long are access to the digital resources included for in this initial cost?
So I believe most of the subscriptions from when I was looking through the itemized list are annual, but it's a fraction of the cost. And what I did, Brendan, because as this first year, we might decide we like some of them better than others. So that could happen. And that's purposely why I funded them through Alliance, which, once you put it in Alliance, as long as you don't take it out, you can continue it in the future in Alliance. So it'll never be a board, a general budget thing. That's purposefully. But I'll be able to provide more detail. That's a good question. More information over the course of next year of what programs, what component, digital components we want to keep or maybe not keep.
Thank you.
Jaime, did you have a question?
That was my question.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, do people feel ready to vote on this? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote, please, Janet.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Hi.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Hi.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
No, I, I did say aye.
I heard you. Thank you.
I thought there were two Ms. Hanys.
But my, I'm no, I'm no.
Okay, let's, let's keep voting, guys.
Ms. Ive.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Thank you.
And we have one other action item on the agenda, which is approval of the budget transfers that have been recommended to us by the Finance and Audit Committee.
I move we approve the budget items brought forth by the Finance and Budget Committee, Audit Committee, whatever.
Second, by Katrina.
Okay, do, do you all want to have Rita share them with us?
We already saw them, right? The public, the public hasn't seen them.
Some of us weren't at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting yesterday.
One second. I just wanted to make sure I was off mute. I'm sorry. Okay. Can everyone see them?
Yes.
All right, let me get to the page where it starts. There are a few. I, I, do I need to go through them?
Um, I think the Finance and Audit Committee is recommending it. I don't feel like we need to go through them all. But we certainly can ask, have anybody on the board ask questions at this point? Does anybody in the board have questions? Was there anything extraordinary that we should know about Rita?
I do want to say that this is a odd year, and you're going to see more transfers due to COVID and, you know, the unfilled positions, people moving, using up grants. So there is a large one on here, actually, two large ones, I believe. There's one for 888,000, and then another one for 226,000. And that's moving, fixing deficits and surpluses between salary accounts mainly. So those are the two, two large ones.
Also, the 888,001 includes returning 400 and somewhat thousands of the 2% ECS setback that we didn't use at 483,000. So that's why that's a lot. We're getting back to the town, that 2% of the ECS setback.
Thanks, Mark.
Just to make sure that we point out to the public that we are returning money to the city, or to the town.
Thanks for the plug, Mark.
Anything else? Any questions? So the bottom line dollar amount for the transfer is?
This from yesterday is 1.4 million.
Does anybody, could we, so we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Thank you, Rita, for keeping on top of all this.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Hi.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Hi.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Ms. Ive.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill.
Hi.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're done with any business, and we're on to public comment. So anybody who would like to speak during public comment?
Lynn, I just have something to share.
Sure.
Um, and I know it says it's supposed to be related to the agenda, and this really isn't directly related to the agenda. But as the board knows, we received a few weeks back the resignation from Mr. Miguel Pabon, our Acting Executive Director of People Services. Tonight is actually his last board meeting. So we wanted to wish him the best. And I wanted to give him a chance. I know he's, he's going to say something. But I did want to wish him the best because he's not going to be with us. Well, I guess we have another couple of days with you, right, Miguel?
Yeah.
We're definitely going to miss his attention to detail, his expertise in social emotional learning, and all the work he's done with Wellness Wednesdays through this chaos of COVID. So wanted to wish him the best. He's been with us for about four and a half years now, and we're going to miss him. So just wanted everybody to.
Thank you, Tracy. And Lynn, can I say a few words?
Absolutely, Miguel.
Thank you. And so I had asked Tracy if I could say a few words tonight, just to really take a moment. I know that I sent an email to staff, and I know the Board of Ed members also got that email. But I wanted to, you know, as, as personally as, as we can get through virtual, right? I recall four and a half years ago, I sat in front of the board, and I think there's only like two board members who were there that day, Dr. Jaime Gomez and Tracy Lambert. But, um, again, I just wanted to personally thank all of you as board members, and as well as the Wyndham community for really allowing me the opportunity to serve and support the staff, the students, the families over the last four and a half years. I am leaving, but it wasn't an easy decision. And I really will miss all of the, you know, working relationships that I've built over the last four and a half years. But I really wanted to wish all of you the best of continued success and moving on forward. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Miguel. We're going to miss you.
Miguel, we're going to miss you. Really miss you. But Waterbury is gaining you, and that's very nice for Waterbury, very sad for us. Very sad.
I hope they're nice, as nice to you as we were.
Thank you, Ilda.
I bet you didn't say that every day.
Well, thank you, Miguel. All the best, all the best.
Ms. Hager.
We have Joanne Hadad in public comment?
Yeah, good evening. I just, I did want to address the, about the Wyndham High School renovation and just say that this Wyndham High School graduate and administrator in the district would love to say a few words about just how exciting, how awesome it is. It ranks up there with the Frogs on the Bridge, the new center at Gilson, and the day the middle school opened its doors. Next up is to recruit, recruit, and I will do my best at Wyndham Middle School. I'll do my, my best to take a part in doing that because we, we need to keep building it up. So Ilda was right. Yes, we've put it on the map. But I think we need to keep it there. And so I hope we all work hard to do that. I could not be more proud at this moment about what's going on at Wyndham High School. So thank you to that committee. Thank you, Board of Ed. Awesome job, and it's a very proud, proud moment. Thank you.
And thank you to the voters in Wyndham who approved it all. So. So thank you, Joanne. Anybody else want to speak during public comment? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:41.
I move, we move.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. Have a nice weekend.
Everybody.
Bye, everyone.
Good luck, Miguel.
Thanks.
Bye, Miguel.
Yes, bye, Miguel.
Bye, Mary.
We'll miss you at you-know-where.